Okay, now five o'clock, like to call the meeting to order. If clerk Seagrist could please call the roll.
Right, trustee Anthony is absent, so trustee Foster.
Good evening.
Graham Hudek, good evening. Clerk Seagrist is here. Don't see treasurer Slavens.
Yes. Yep. Right corner.
I see treasurer Slavens in the bottom, sorry Diane for that.
That's okay.
trustee Snyderman.
I'm here.
And supervisor Williams.
Good evening. Call for motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second. We'll call vote on the motion.
And Foster.
Yes.
Hugh Deck.
Yes.
Seagrist, yes. Slavens.
Yes.
Snyderman. Williams.
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, next item we have a call for motion to approve two sets of minutes from the October thirteenth and October twentieth meetings.
So moved.
Support.
Hey Mike, can I try something and you tell me if this is okay?
Sure.
Could I call for objections to the motion? If I hear none, just pass it by unanimous consent.
For the minutes?
Yeah, yeah. Is there anybody who objects to approving the minutes as presented?
Oh, well, we could always put them in the consent calendar. We haven't been doing much consent calendar. We've been doing virtual, have we?
No, we haven't really. But okay, okay, we'll stay traditional. So we have a motion, we have a second. Can we have a roll call vote on the motion, please?
And Foster.
Hi.
And Graham Hudek.
Hi.
Seagrist, aye. Slavens.
Aye.
Snyderman.
Hi.
Williams.
Hi. Now would be time to any citizens non-agenda item comments or public comment. Is there anybody who would like to make public comment at this time? On an item that's not on the agenda? Is there anybody who'd like to make public comment? Michael, could you see if there's any raised hands in the audience?
We have one attendee and I see no raised hands.
Okay. Call for motion to pay the bills, treasurer Slavens.
Mister Supervisor, I make a motion that we pay the bills.
Okay.
Okay, we'll call a vote in favor of the motion.
And Foster.
Aye.
Graham Hudek.
Aye.
Seagrist, aye. Slavens.
Aye.
Snyderman.
Aye.
Williams.
Hi. Item G one now, consider amendments to the township's policy zero dot oh seven. Procedure for conduct of township board meetings in light of amendments to the open meetings act. Authorizing us to continue to have electronic meetings in certain circumstances such as the pandemic.
Mister Supervisor, I move to approve the amendments to operations policy seven, procedure for conduct of township board meetings as presented.
Support.
Good. In terms of summary, Governor Whitmore has signed into law Public Act two twenty eight of twenty twenty. Authorizing electronic meetings under certain circumstances, including retroactively legitimizing all virtual meetings of public bodies. Dating back to March eighteen twenty twenty. Public Act two twenty eight requires amendments to policies and procedures governing meetings of public bodies to provide guidelines of the holdings of such meetings. Is there any discussion? We have Kristen Kolbe online with us if there's any question for council on this item. Straight forward, I think. See no question, comments or raised hands. Call for a motion to. Or call, roll call vote, please.
Austin.
Aye.
Graham Hudek.
Aye.
Seagrist, aye. Slavens.
Aye.
Snyderman.
Aye.
Williams.
Hi. Item G two, consider approval of governmental agreement with Wayne County for road improvements to Wayne County. Primary local roads in Canton Township village program. And just a clarification, there was an earlier agenda or a set of documents had gone out where the title was incorrect, but all the information in the. Agenda item G two was correct, the details and facts were all correct. It was just a correction to the title itself, so. We've got Jade on the line if there's any questions.
Mister Supervisor, I move to approve the attached intergovernmental agreement with Wayne County submitted final completion of attachment. D is approved by the municipal services director and further move to authorize yourself, township supervisor, to sign on behalf of Canton Township.
Support.
In summary, June of twenty eighteen, Wayne County Executive committed a total of a million one fifty. The Canton Township contingent on the passage to the Rhodes Village, which was successful. The dollars were to be used in the following way, four hundred thousand dollars for local road improvements and seven hundred and fifty thousand for major road improvements. The attachment to governmental agreement provides Wayne County. The facility or the tools to reimburse the township for construction expenses. And has been reviewed by staff and legal and all recommend this for board approval. Attachment D, as mentioned in the IGA, will be submitted to Wayne County by December thirty first twenty twenty. For reimbursement of the previous projects that we've already spent the funds on. Are there any questions for Jade or Kristen or Wendy on this one? Go ahead, Summer.
Any idea once we approve this and when the funds get paid out for the IGA?
That's. I. I can, I can answer or Wendy can answer. So in the IGA, we'll get this to the county as soon as possible and it'll go before their commission for approval. As soon as we send this to them, we're also going to send the invoice as well to their treasury department. I can say that we just received the one point nine million dollars for Ridge Road. That was approved probably two years ago, so, but we just received it, so we'll be diligent on. Keeping on them to get our funds, but we will invoice them as soon as possible and as soon as this IGA is approved.
Thank you.
Yep.
Good question, fair question. Any other comments or questions for Jade, Wendy or Kristen? Go ahead, Steven.
Just wondering when Ridge Road will be completed.
It is, it's, they're getting ready to pave now, so you should see that all. Road back open up here in the next probably three to four weeks. There'll be some restoration in the spring and the summer of next year, but the actual construction and road use will be back open before the winter this year.
Great.
Emery.
Jade, you look like you're a witness, an anonymous witness, you're in the.
I know, I'm trying to fix the lighting, I don't know what's.
But I was wondering, I noticed some of the neighborhoods, like when you have long stretches of the. Road that needed to be fixed, like one of them in Proctor, that they only did a piece, do you know, are you seeing a lot of projects like that where the neighborhoods are coming in, okay, we're only going to do this portion of the road this year? Then the next, the next year, or do we assign those priorities instead? Like on the.
So. Right, so what we're doing is we're working with the associations in tandem. Our internal engineers are our engineering contractors and the homeowners association. And we're working on what those. Projects should look like. It's interesting you bring that up because the county is bringing forward some new policies and procedures as far as how to. Replace projects in the future, so we're in conversations with them moving forward. You may actually see bigger portions of the street be replaced, to be required to be. Than what we've previously done.
Okay, yeah, that's good.
But the reason we're doing it the way that it is and the engineers have all recommended. We can get more of the problem areas done by making those replacement areas a little bit smaller. But we're not sure how that's going to move going forward because the county is doing some internal changes.
Okay, alright. Do you think it would take the project a longer time to get done that way by doing it? I mean, rather than doing a whole street?
No, I don't, I don't think so, and if anything, you would see a smaller project. It wouldn't go for as long of the stretch of the road because it would take more material and more time to complete just one full section as it would be to the little sections that we're doing now. So we'll actually see smaller road projects and we won't see our dollar go as far. So that's what we're debating with the, with the county now.
Another question that we've had is in terms of the person who's working on it, they'll do a piece of a road and they'll go on to another, then they'll come back to it. Is there a way we can have them maybe finish so they can get projects done quicker rather than prolonging them?
Yeah, you're probably talking about the concrete roads, is the concrete replacement? There is some curing that has to happen, and I know this is a big hot button with some of the residents out there that the concrete does have to cure for a certain amount of time. I guess, I guess maybe we could talk offline because I'm not really sure what, like what they're doing, what they're referring to that they're doing first and then what they're coming back to do, so probably. More of that would be.
I can add to Emery's question, what they're doing is they're sending in crews, the first to the taro. And that crew moves to another section of town and goes, starts working the taro. And then another crew that comes from some other part of town that just finished another section and then they do the prep work. And then they move away and it could sit there for a week or two while they wait for their next crew to come in to actually do the pouring. So it looks like they're elongating the chain in the way they're breaking up and sending crews, their specialty crews on projects around town, so.
Okay, yeah, so, so what I can do is we can, I can clarify this with engineering and with contract, but that maybe. That the tear out crew is different than the subcontractor that's actually coming in and actually laying in the cement. And then organizing and coordinating when that subcontractor comes back. But I can actually get much more specific details as to how that process works and set that out to everybody.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Go ahead, Michael.
I just want to, you know, I mean, so this IGA was written by Wayne County?
It was.
Okay, so this is. Obviously, something I was really involved in, you know, pretty early on, I'm happy to see. And continue and I'm happy to see ideally that the Wayne County Commission will uphold kind of the commitment. This is a great working relationship we have with Wayne County. The extra funds that help supplement our millage are also, are also huge, so. I'm just really, really happy to see this. I did see that it needs to be executed by the end of the year, is that correct?
That's correct.
We feel like that's a time, a timeline that we're comfortable with?
Yes, I will have, after the approval tonight, if it is approved, I will gather signatures, create those exhibits which are pretty much done. And we will be submitting this back to the county by the end of the week. And then they will take it before their commission, and as I said, we will follow up even before the IG is approved at the commission level at the county. Treasury will actually have the invoice for the one point one five million dollars.
Seeing no other comments at this point, we'll call a vote.
And Foster.
Aye.
Graham Hudek.
Aye.
Seagrist, aye. Slavens.
Aye.
Snyderman.
Aye.
Williams.
Hi. Item G three, consider extending contract for the Discover brochure printing sorting distribution. Twenty, Director Holenberger's shop is over this and. Call for a motion?
Supervisor, I move to authorize a one-year contract extension for the printing, sorting and distribution of one Discover addition to Grand Blank Printing Company at nine four four nine Holly Road in Grand Blank, Michigan. Three nine.
Support.
Good. November thirteenth, twenty eighteen, the board trustees awarded the printing, sorting, distribution of four additions. Can't leisure services discover brochure to Grand Blank Printing Company. Today, three of the additions have been printed due to COVID. The fourth one has been put on hold. The fourth edition has been pushed into twenty twenty one. Leisure Services is now requesting approval to extend the contract for printing, sorting and distribution, the final fourth edition of the Discover brochure to twenty twenty one. And are there any questions or? Didn't make a whole lot of sense to print it right now with everything being shut down, so. Make that logical. Any questions? Comments? Be none. We'll call vote on the motion.
Foster.
Aye.
Graham Hudek.
Aye.
Seagrist, aye. Slavens.
Aye.
Snyderman.
Aye.
Williams.
Item G four, consider approval award contract to Modern Vending Services.
Supervisor, I move to award the contract for Canton Township Facility Vending Machine Services to Modern Vending Incorporated. Inc. At two eight one zero Elliott Troy, Michigan, four eight zero eight three.
Support.
Thank you, Diane. Canton Township has held a contract with Modern Vending Services since twenty twelve. April twenty twenty, the existing contract with Modern Vending Services expired at which time Canton Township went out for bid. And received no bid applications to continue service of operations. Modern Vending submitted a proposal to Canton Township, negotiated with them to identify a contract which was attached to the A in the deck. Based on previous performance and proposal terms. Vision Services now recommending Modern Vending Services Inc. For the Canton Township Facilities Vending Service Contract again. Are there any questions or comments for Director Holenberger? Okay, seeing none, roll call vote on the motion.
Foster.
Aye.
Graham Hudek.
Aye.
Seagrist, aye. Slavens.
Aye.
Snyderman.
Aye.
Williams.
Hi. Item G five, consider approval bid award to Goyet Mechanical to replace boilers at Public Safety Headquarters.
Mister Supervisor, I move to award the bid to Goyet Mechanical at three eight four two Gory Avenue in Flint, Michigan, four eight five oh one. For replacement of boilers at the Public Safety Headquarters in the amount of forty three thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars to be paid from the account number listed for capital improvement plan.
Support.
On October first, twenty twenty, Leisure Services advertised an invitation to bid. For the replacement boilers, Public Safety Headquarters, of the fourteen bids that were received for Goyet. Mechanical was the lowest bid of forty three thousand eight fifty. We're recommending Goyet Mechanical for the replacement of boilers at Public Safety Headquarters in the amount as shown. To be paid from the accounts as identified from the capital improver plan. And we have Greg Hollenberger online that can speak to this if there are any questions or comments.
I just have a question, I see. That they were the only, they came in low, but pretty tight in with a couple of other vendors where it seems like the. Amount of money is pretty inconsequential, I mean, so there's a thirteen thousand dollar difference between them and the next one above them, there's a couple up to forty four thousand. We're comfortable that while they are the lowest bidder, they are still a qualified, qualified bidder, he reached out to them and.
Absolutely, we've had a long working history with Goyet, they've done a lot of work for us and.
Okay.
Greg, you broke up a little bit after you said a long history.
Okay, sorry about that. We've had a long history of working with them, we've done several projects with Goyet Mechanical and had very good results with everything that they've done for us.
Good, thank you. All right, roll call vote on the motion?
Foster.
Aye.
Graham Hudek.
Aye.
Seagrist, aye. Slavens.
Aye.
Snyderman.
Aye.
Williams.
Hi. Item G six, consider approval bid award and purchase order to Corby Energy Services to replace backup power generator at fire station number one with a budget amendment.
I'm going to merge these into one motion. For the sake of. Time, if that's appropriate, Mister Supervisor.
Over.
I move to award the bid and approve a purchase order to Corby Energy Services at six zero zero one Shuner Drive Belleville, Michigan, four eight one one one. The replacement of a backup power generator at the fire station number one. In the amount of forty three thousand three nine hundred and seventy five dollars to be paid from the account number listed. And to approve the amendment to the twenty twenty fire budget decreasing the transfer to fund balance account and increasing the capital machinery and equipment account both. By the same amount, forty three thousand nine hundred and seventy five dollars to fund this purchase.
Support.
On October first, twenty twenty, Regional Services advertised the invitation to bid to replace the backup generator at fire station one. Nine bids were received, Corby Energy Services was the lowest bid. We are recommending Corby Energy Services for the replacement of the backup power generator at fire station one. In the amount as shown in the, coming from the accounts as identified. Also recommend an amendment to the twenty twenty fire budget to use fire fund balance for this purchase. And we have, again, Greg on the line, he can speak to this later. Go ahead, Emery.
Yeah, I was just wondering, is there also a, like a warranty with this? Is it for a year or something like that? What is the backup?
Give me your degree.
Give it again, yeah, I can follow up with exactly what the warranty is, I don't have that in front of me, it's usually like one to five years on the. One, probably one to two years on the actual appointment and then labor is five to ten years, but I can follow up with that.
So does that mean they also, I mean, are all of them the same pretty much? Is that equivalent with all of them?
Yes, yeah, we spec, we always spec the warranty in the bid specs of what we require.
Alright, thanks.
And Corby is the one that did all the electrical work that we had for the underground infrastructure behind the administration building a couple of years ago where we had to run new. Underground connection between during the summit and some of the switch panels, it was extremely. Done a great work for us in the past as well.
If you could get confirmation on the warranty and send it to all of them.
Well, I'll see if I can even get it before the end of the meeting.
Any other comments, questions? Seeing none, roll call vote on the motion.
Foster.
Aye.
Graham Hudek.
Aye.
Seagrist, aye. Slavens.
Aye.
Snyderman.
Aye.
Williams.
Hi. Item G eight, consider approval budget amendment and emergency purchase order to replace heat exchangers on fleet carrier rooftop units at Fellows Creek Golf Club.
Supervisor, I move to award the bid for the shingle roof replacement fleet building to Sheena Roof and Sheet Metal Company Incorporated. Two eight two nine nine. Carrick Drive, Chesterfield, Michigan, four eight zero four seven, in the amount of forty nine thousand one hundred and twenty five dollars with funds to be paid from the account number listed, capital improvement plan.
Support.
Recently, the exchangers, the heat exchangers at Fellows Creek Golf Club unexpectedly stopped working and needed to be evaluated. Due to the urgency of this issue, Bumbler Mechanical was called in to inspect the unit. Where it's determined that the heat exchangers on three carrier rooftop units were not applicable, would need to be replaced. Therefore, the contractor was asked to submit the proposal, which is in the attachments. To replace the heat exchangers as soon as possible, the amount to replace them as shown here will require a budget amendment. Due to the urgency of this matter, a memo was signed off by myself and finance director to waive the normal bidding process. Due to the emergency repair that was required. Are there any questions for either Greg or Wendy on this side? It's being done, roll call vote on the motion.
Foster.
Aye.
Graham Hudek.
Aye.
Seagrist, aye. Slavens.
Aye.
Snyderman.
Aye.
Williams.
Hi. Item G nine, consider approving five-year agreement with Comcast with dedicated internet service for body worn and in-car cameras.
Move, Mister Supervisor, I move to approve a five-year agreement with Comcast. For fifty megabytes per second of decade, dedicated internet service to be used in conjunction with the utility. Body worn and in-car camera system for a monthly charge of four hundred and seventy five dollars for sixty months totaling twenty eight thousand five hundred dollars.
Support.
Okay. Police Department, five-year agreement. For fifty megabytes per second, Steve, I don't know if that's saying that right or not. It seems really fast. Dedicated internet service is required for the new utility body worn in-car camera system. The Township's ITS managers reviewed the information off, Greg also recommends dedicated service as presented. Comcast is currently the Township's internet service provider and will work with ITS. To facilitate the configuration and integration into our current network environment. Again, Comcast has voted the discounted rate of four seventy five per month for sixty months. With a five-year agreement totaling twenty eight five. And we have Chad on the line that can speak to this, and I think it's all about the speed of going through records. The truth, Chad?
It's true, it's also, it provides for immediate upload into the Amazon, Amazon Web Services, which is a storage for the body worn camera system. So it's stored through Amazon Web Services and this is a dedicated line that's separate from anywhere else where our body cams will be solely on this line.
So. Pat. Um.
Which group?
So you're saying this is, the camera comes back to the station and is connected somehow to this dedicated line to send the data up to the cloud, it's not. It's not cellular or something.
Right, there's four waypoints, so it's sent through those waypoints at the station and it's sent up to Amazon Web Services that where it's stored in the cloud that way.
Okay.
They're not actually making a physical connection, it's just they pull in and it reads from their device?
That's correct.
Wow.
And, but then there is a physical connection that Comcast to high-speed connection for the data to be transferred out of the station.
Yes, sir.
Okay, cool.
Any other comments, questions for Chad? Okay, so none, roll call vote on the motion?
Foster.
Aye.
Graham Hudek.
Aye.
Seagrist, aye. Slavens.
Aye.
Snyderman.
Aye.
Williams.
Hi. Item G ten, appointments to downtown development authority board.
We have G nine still, or?
Does that work just too?
Oh.
You know, we skipped.
Uh-oh.
We, we skipped, I believe we skipped the.
G eight.
Yeah.
Fellows Creek Heat.
Yeah, we did.
Oh.
Let's get G eight.
We did, we did seven, we didn't do eight?
Correct.
Boy, oh boy. Do you want to, Mister Supervisor, do you want to do eight?
Yeah, let me make sure that I've got it here.
I think we did eight, not seven.
Yeah, the motion I read was seven's motion, the supervisor read eight's title, I, that didn't make sense in my head.
Yeah, I know.
Alright, so.
I thought it was a terminology thing.
Okay, so we have to redo both? How does that work, Michael?
I think we approve G seven, no matter what Pat said.
Yeah, so I think we just, I just need to do G eight real quick.
Okay.
Yeah, we need to do G eight.
Yeah.
Just read the motion for G eight and.
You want me to entertain, you want to entertain the motion, Mister Supervisor?
Yes, please. In one, in a single reading.
When this election's over, I promise.
No problem.
Mistakes. Mister Supervisor, I move to approve the emergency purchase order of the replacement of heat exchangers of three car, of three carrier rooftop units to Bumbler Mechanical at six two six zero eighteen and a half mile road Sterling Heights, Michigan, four eight three one four. In the amount of fourteen thousand eight hundred and ninety five dollars to be paid from the account number listed, capital availability improvements and to approve the attached budget amendment.
Support.
Roll call, vote on the motion as, as already discussed the details on that one.
Foster.
Aye.
Graham Hudek.
Aye.
Seagrist, aye. Slavens.
Aye.
Snyderman.
Aye.
Williams.
Hi. I'm looking back on at G seven here, Mike, and it's, I remember you doing the.
Roof.
They're over the Sheema shingle. Systems, just.
Yeah, and I remember you saying that you had waived the bidding process and I was like, there's three bids right there, what's he talking about in my head?
So the good news is, is the Greg's team did a great job on G seven for us, so it was approved appropriately, thank you.
Alright. Woo.
That, okay, now, can I move on to G ten?
Yes, sir.
Which is appointments to downtown development authority board. Call for the motion?
Mister Supervisor, I move to the Canton Township Board of Trustees' appoints. Widad Suliman and Kurt Olson to serve on the board of directors of the Downtown Development Authority. For the charter township of Canton for a four-year term beginning November one, twenty twenty and ending November one, twenty twenty four.
Support.
The, the DDA exists as a separate tax entity. Under the state public act one ninety seven of nineteen seventy five. And it does require, provides for us to have a separate board of eight to twelve members. The majority of them must have an interest in the DDA. Uh, the majority of them must have an interest in the D D A. Uh, whether they be a property owner, business owner, or a manager of the local businesses or residents at large can also participate. So this is the, the first appointments, I believe, I'm correct, Summer and Stephen got, um, were engaged in the process. Interviewed the candidates from the top candidates that were selected from the resumes that have come in. And Widad Suliman is a resident of Canton and is currently works as an attorney for Chapman Law Group in Troy. Suliman has the experience with public body and governments and has run multiple campaigns for state office and completed a statewide fellowship at MSU on public policy and politics. Although new to the community, has had a desire to deserve and hopes to give different perspective and provide value for the residents of Canton. Kurt Olson is also a Canton resident who runs his own law practice in Plymouth. As a practicing attorney since nineteen eighty five, Mr. Olson believes that he has some legal knowledge and problem-solving abilities to help the D D A efficiently function as a longtime Canton resident. He wishes to give back to the community and make an even better place to live and do business. Based on the completed application, the interviews that were done with Stephen and Foster. And the committee believes that both candidates would make excellent addition to D D A Board of Directors. And I think especially so, even though it doesn't say it here, with the Boulevard coming in the future, there's going to be a lot of intricacies there that are going to be land acquisition and other things where a couple attorneys would not be too bad to have them on the board, they're helping the D D A board, so. I think Summer and Steve did a great job in this election, hopefully you guys can support it. Are there any questions for, this really Summer and Steve did interview all the candidates, any questions for them?
I will just add that Mr. Olson does have a background in doing that kind of law, so we thought he would be a great um, addition to the D D A. Um, both candidates were really excited about serving Canton and um, we were just really impressed by both of them.
Yeah, and I thought the process worked very well.
Mm-hmm.
Anne Marie?
Anne Marie, thank you for doing, I was just wondering, um, so how has the D D A board changed? Who has left and who has come on with your process?
I think the most significant change that kind of rocked it was Melissa McLaughlin passing away. Because she was the, the, one of the, the main leaders of that group. We also had, um, Greg Green who serves both on the planning commission and the, the D D A. Um, the idea with Greg was to have him continue on as a planning, but create an opportunity for somebody new to get involved with the D D A. And that was the other change, and then trying to think what else.
We reappointed three other members to D D A last meeting.
Orgey all day.
Seth. And someone else, I'm blanking right now.
We, there was really the replacement of, of Greg Green and Melissa.
Mm-hmm.
Best way, the simplest way to look at this.
Okay, we had a big send-off for Greg, I think it was last week for the D D A. They had an in-person meeting and a send-off for him because I think he'd served on it for over twenty years, so.
Twenty-three years.
Yeah.
Well, he's a good asset to the planning board, definitely. Okay, thank you.
Michael.
Supervisor, I, I know it doesn't, I don't believe it rises to the level of a conflict under our ethics ordinance. But I just, for the purposes of its information and the interest of transparency, I have in the past done some accounting and tax work for one of the appointees, uh, Mr. Olson. Um, clearly I am not in practice as a tax professional anymore, so I have no financial interest in his, you know, and.
I don't think, I don't see a conflict there. It was a relationship that's many years past, I wouldn't worry about it.
But, there you go, now you are all in the community now.
No other comments or questions, uh, we'll call vote on the motion.
Foster.
Hi.
Graham Hudek.
Hi.
Seagull style Slavens.
Hi.
Snyderman.
Hi.
Williams.
Hi. That concludes our, our formal business for the evening. Um, is there any staff comments at this time? Any staff comments? Chris, go ahead, please.
I'll just say real quick, I got some good news today on that grant for the monitors for the three hundred and sixty thousand. Um, we got the quote back today. Um, we don't have to go out for bid for it because it was a regional grant through Dearborn Heights with their other communities. But that three hundred and sixty thousand will buy us ten new monitors and that's going to cover all of our monitors. And the trade-ins that we're, we're giving back, the nine trade-ins, um, those were monitors that we got in the last A F G grant. That's covering like eighty two thousand dollars worth, so it will cover another five years' worth of, um extended warranty along with battery replacement and all those things, so it should free us up from a lot of maintenance costs over the next five years. And we're finally, we're working on some, um, to find out if that trade-in will counter the, um the ten percent match that we have, so I'll have an answer on that shortly to see if the government will accept that as our ten percent match, so all good news on that today.
Okay, go ahead, Greg.
I just heard back from Brad Sharp on the warranty, it's one-year parts of labor on the generator.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't catch any of the wild flyers. Um, Jade, Wendy. Okay, Chad, go ahead, Jade.
Yeah, I, I guess, um, this was a kind of a follow-up from the last meeting last week, Anne Marie, you had a question about hybrid vehicles. Um, I did go back and do some research with Fleet and we do have one, I talked with, uh, Chief Bob, that we do have a, um, hybrid vehicle in the police department. And we are looking at making the inspector vehicle, we actually did budget enough dollars to possibly make that a hybrid vehicle as well. So we are, we are, we are looking at those types of things, um, we just don't have very many in the fleet at this time.
Thank you, you know, actually also even putting in, um, some conduit for some like charging. I know with hybrids, you don't need to do that, but you know, it's going to be changing even more, evolving more towards more electric.
We have been doing that as well, um, I know at the summit lot last time when we repaved it a couple of years conduit was installed so that we would be able to run electric if and when that time arose.
That's a nice tie to the meetings we were having with D T E. As we started the conversation there, I think Jade, we need to get him back in to
Yes.
Continue the conversation maybe after the election.
Okay.
I'll, I'll add one more thing, we also, uh, this week got, uh, two, um, retirements, so two of our battalion chiefs from the fire department will be retiring, so we'll put a press release out for that shortly. Uh, but two longstanding twenty-eight-year veterans, um, that will be retiring in a couple of weeks, so we'll congratulate them.
Oh, great. Great.
Chad, anything to add?
How do you get off mute? Sorry, it's been busy with the police department, but nothing else really to share publicly, and thank you for all the support.
Alrighty, um, any trustee comments at this time? Yeah, go ahead, Anne Marie.
Oh, yes, so right now Public Safety is setting up for the Halloween drive-through. And then I hope everybody has a safe for Halloween and hopefully it dries up. But, um, hopefully a lot of kids go over there, I know a lot of people were kind of standing back because it's pouring rain, but they're still setting up, so hope to see everyone there.
That's a trunk or treat from six to eight, correct? I think, is that correct? Six to eight?
Yes.
Safety, a different business organization, we put that together, it's nice.
Wonder if they have a connection church.
Alrighty, I have nothing to add, so call for a motion to adjourn.
Support.
We'll call a vote on the motion.
Foster.
Hi.
Graham Hudek.
Hi.
Seagull style Slavens.
Hi.
Snyderman.
Hi.
Williams.
Hi. That concludes our, thank you guys very much, we say.
Happy Halloween.
Happy Halloween, everybody.